We're gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody to the Brunswick County Board of Education Meeting for December. And today is December 5th. We're gonna have the invocation by Ms. Milligan, and then we're gonna have the presentation of the colors and our pledge done by the West Brunswick High School JROTC led by Cadet Major Ruiz. Would everybody please stand?
Would you bow with me, please? Most gracious Father in heaven, we come before you this night to give thanks for all that you bestowed upon Brunswick County schools. You have graciously blessed us with some of the best students we could ever hope to have, one of the most awesome faculties we could ever hope to have, and we ask that you continue to do so as the new year comes about. We thank you for all that you've given us, and we ask that you guide us this night with wisdom to carry out the business of the students of Brunswick County schools, for we humbly ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Cover your eyes. Halt! Close! Close! Right! Centered face! Reese it! Halt! Please show me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united in the vehicle, with liberty and justice for all. Forward! Halt! Centered face! Forward! March!
At this time, we'll turn the meeting over to Superintendent Tubbs.
Good evening and thank you for being here. This is annual reorganization of the Board. The organizational meeting of the Board of Education has been called to order. We have a quorum present, as you see. The first order of business is to elect the Board of Officers tonight. And just as a reminder, that nominations do not require a second, nor a motion is needed to close the nomination. And at this time, do I hear nominations for the Office of Board Chair?
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Mr. Miller as Board Chair.
Mr. Miller, would you accept the nomination?
I'd be honored.
Do I hear any other nominations at this time? All in favor of Mr. Miller being elected as the Board Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that Mr. Miller is duly nominated and elected as the Chair of the Brunswick County Board of Education for a one-year term with a 5-0 vote. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Tubbs, and thank you, my fellow board members. The next order of business is, do I hear nominations for the Office of Vice Chair?
Mr. Miller, I'd like to nominate Ms. Catherine Cook.
Is there any other nominations? No other nominations, call for a vote. All in favor of Ms. Catherine Cook as Vice Chair, please indicate.
Aye.
Okay, let the record show that Ms. Catherine Cook is duly elected Vice Chair of the Brunswick County Board of Education for a term of one year. Congratulations, Ms. Cook. All right, next thing on the agenda is our Board Salutes.
I will take care of this. This is a fun part of this meeting, and it's a fun meeting each year. We have an annual student art contest that has become anticipated by all of us in the schools, and it's a tradition that we have the Superintendent's Holiday Card Contest, and the winners and the cards are placed at Franklin Square also for people to see. We invite all of the art students to participate, and this year thirteen out of our nineteen schools participated. You will see that there were many, many outstanding entries that were received, and the selection panel that was charged with making the decision found it to be a very difficult decision to make this year. There's four grade level categories with winners in each one of those. The winners will receive a complimentary set of twenty-five of their own outstanding card designs to share, and we would like to congratulate the following students for their superior artwork, and we want to recognize the students' respective art teachers, the school principals, and the parents of each of these students. The first category is K through two category, and this has become kind of a standing tradition in Jesse May Monroe's art teacher generally leads the challenge in here. The winner of this category is Carter Hood. He's a first-grade Carter, if you will please stand up. Look at him, he has red hair like I used to. If you'll come forward, please. If you'll come down, please.
That's good.
And the art teacher is Teresa Ryder, and the parents of Carter, if you will stand and come down also, please. Carter, when you get old like me, the red hair turns gray.
Falls out.
And bald, it turns loose or gray. Yes, sir. Congratulations.
And we got another one.
All right, the next category.
Who's the next, the second you brought?
Hmm? I haven't called the second one yet. I was still talking about Carter and Jesse May. The next category is grades three through five. Tess Coran, the fourth grader at Jesse May, is the young lady that won in this category. And again, Ms. Ryder and Ms. Williams, if you will come down, and the parents of Tess, if they will come forward too. Got all the pictures. Fantastic. Congratulations Tess and Jesse May. Grade six through eight is Juliana Harold, who's a sixth grader at South Brunswick Middle School. Her art teacher is Hope Hire, and the principal is Mr. Ruth. And if the parents of Juliana will come down also, please. And you young people don't get too far away, because we want a picture of all of you at one time with the... Congratulations, Juliana. The last category is grades nine through twelve, and Charlie Norris, who is a twelfth grader at West Brunswick High School, is the winner in this category. The art teacher is Sheila Valt, and the principal is Rhonda Benton. And if Ms. Benton, if she is here, please come down, and the parents of Charlie, please come down also. And again, I ask you if you ride down to Franklin Square in Southport in an hour, you will see all of the Christmas cards posted, and they really are amazing.
Is that your idea?
All right.
Ms. Tucker, come on. I need one more, Jill.
And I use these cards also. I send the cards out as my Christmas cards. Congratulations to all of these young folks and their parents and the school principal, and to the art teachers. And you know, if you really want to understand what I call a triple-A school system, you have the academics, you have the athletics, and in athletics, I consider that to be all of the extracurriculars like JROTC, the course and those. And then you have the art programs, the music and the visual arts. This is an example of what we do in Brunswick County schools with our young people, all the way from kindergarten through the twelfth grade. And it's important that we keep these programs in our school, because it makes our school more fruitful, makes your children better students, and they become lifelong learners, and they appreciate what it's about. Thank you, all of you.
All right, next on our agenda is the presentations. Teacher's voice, Ms. Phillips.
I'm a little more here at this time, so first time was a little nerve-wracking. If you don't mind, I just want to say hello again, and there's an art teacher I'd like to recognize. Ms. Connie Ennis asked me to mention this to you guys. Ms. Janet Stevenson from Waukamaw was just rewarded a $1,250 grant towards Cheap Joe's Art Supplies given by the Oak Island Art Guild. So, another example of the community supporting the arts program. Wanted to make sure that you guys knew that.
And if you remember, Ms. Phillips is an art teacher at Leland Middle School.
Yes.
Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. I do have quite a few things on the agenda for me, if that's okay. First of all, I'd like to start off by answering your question, Mr. Thompson, from last month's meeting. I don't know if you remember, but you asked me how I would use my background and my position as Brunswick County Teacher of the Year to integrate the arts into the core curriculum, and hopefully doing something county-wide. And it's something that I've been kind of doing, but not intentionally. And so, I plan for piloting a program next semester where I take the first nine weeks of my art class and align it with a math standard from that grade level. I take the second nine weeks of my art curriculum and align it with a science standard from that grade level, and hopes to collect a lot of data. As long as it is successful, I would like to talk with the other middle school art teachers, like Ms. Hope, and we have Stacy, Diane, and Janet. There are five of us together, to see if this is something we might try next year. So, that's something that, you know, I wanna... I will be reporting back to you on that. So, I hope that is kind of what you were looking for.
It's great. Sounds like it's gonna...
I've talked to Mrs. Underwood, my principal, about it, and she's on board, and I know Mr. Kirby as well is excited about trying this. So, being a low-performing school, unfortunately with Leland, we try, at least our arts department tries to continue to help... I'm sorry. We try to make sure that we are doing everything we can to help us get out of low performing. And I feel like that's one way we can do that.
Since you were mentioning that, I did want to mention that there's a program out there called Middle Schools at Work, which is a full program of that same type of integration with core teachers in those subjects, and CTE teachers, and the arts, and all that, where the whole school is working on that same concept.
Is that a state program?
It's a national program.
A national, okay.
But it's called Middle Schools at Work.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. I appreciate that. At the TAC's first meeting in October, I kinda want to talk to you guys about what TAC, where TAC is right now, and what things we kinda want to focus on, and the best way that I've been collecting data is through surveys, because we've only had one meeting... I'm sorry, we've had two meetings, and the first meeting was, you know, getting to know each other. We were a month behind, and then the second meeting, we had some business to take care of. But I wanted to give you a rundown of what the October meeting looked like. And for me coming in, I asked the council a lot of questions concerning Teacher Academy. And as a group, we decided that we would like to collect valuable data to present to you based around sustainability or the continuation of Teacher Academy. But more importantly, trying to figure out a way to collect data based around the effectiveness of Teacher Academy. Was... Did Teacher Academy Year One meet at school? And I believe the goal was to develop lesson plans that could be used county-wide based on, you know, K through twelve, what your curriculum was. And is there a way to show growth from developing your first year? So, I'm curious what you guys think. What sort of data would you like me to... Or I'm sorry, TAC to pull together? What sort of questions should I be asking to get that effective data for you, based around its effectiveness?
Well, certainly, Ms. Phillips, one of the things that you would want to check in with them about would be how effective they were in using the lesson plans that were developed.
So, are they using the lesson plans?
Yes, and if so, how effective have they been?
Okay. Is there a way that you would know, looking at schools that may be low performing, how Teacher Academy could have affected them and their growth?
I don't... I'm just trying to figure out how you would measure some of the things that we want to know, because first of all, you have specific teachers in each school. You may not... You may have a handful in one school. I don't know what the, you know, I don't know what the demographics were as far as how many were from, you know, which schools they were all from. So, one might... I know I talked to a girl that was at early college this summer, and she had just gone through... They went through it earlier. I think they did a preliminary...
They had a three-day...
Preliminary training or something. So, she said that she really didn't think about when she went, that she would change her plans, but she said she changed all her plans. So, I know that specific, you know, would just depend on the school and how they utilize that.
I know for me, with the arts department, and I know Mr. Tubbs talked to us about this in TAC, we started with nothing. There was no unit guide for a visual art teacher kindergarten through twelfth grade, and myself and the art teachers that participated in Teacher Academy were able to have that, working with teachers that have been there, have been teaching for twenty-five years to... We had a first-year teacher in the room. And I remember thinking, oh my gosh, if this had been something when I first started teaching to grab onto, and I can't imagine all the things that I could have done that first year, because it's, you know, you're kind of survival mode. And I know Teresa was there as well. And we were able to make those units, and I didn't have to plan until the second nine weeks, just based on that week.
Ms. Phillips, let me add, tomorrow... We read the notes from the TAC meeting, and we noticed that there was some questions about getting the data for TAC.
Yes, yes.
So, what we've done is, we've scheduled a meeting, actually, it's tomorrow, that will consist of myself, Mr. Cheers, we've asked Ms. Garza from South, one of the designers of the Teacher Academy, to come and meet with us to get some, kind of have a brainstorming session on what data we can select and give to you as the TAC, so you can present it to the Board. So, we're gonna try to supply you as much data as we possibly can.
I did not know about that. Thank you, Dr. Itz.
Yes, ma'am.
That's awesome. Okay, yes.
One item that I think could be measured, that I believe was one of the initial purposes behind Teacher Academy, and that is to provide teachers more time in the classroom with instructional time as opposed to spending their time trying to create lesson plans and doing all the things that they have to be ready with when they walk in the classroom. So, it seems like to me, and I'd like to have some idea of whether or not we actually succeeded in helping with the idea of giving teachers more time to be teachers.
I know for me, I can answer that question. It did. And I would say, probably based on the conversations that TAC has had, I would say about sixty-five percent would probably be along that line.
Well, it would be really good to kind of quantify it, because that was one of our primary objectives.
Just out of curiosity, how many TAC members were at the Teacher Academy? Do you know?
I want to say, I don't know the exact number, Mrs. Cook, but I know we had over half had been there, and when we kind of brainstormed the first day, I made sure to group everyone, small groups, where there were teachers that were at Teacher Academy, and there were some that were not in the same group. So, the ones that were not there were, I wish I'd been there, because there was so much that, you know...
That's a big percentage in that group, that, to me. Seems like it would be.
Yeah.
Ms. Phillips, if I could, one more comment, and I'd let you finish up, but I wanted to speak to you about your notion, your plan for integrating the arts into core curriculums, subject areas. I just want to maybe plant a seed, and you probably are aware of this, but the two areas that you chose, math and science, are also areas that a lot of children, young students, tend to shy away from by the time they're in the sixth or seventh grade.
Particularly females.
Particularly females. They don't think they're very good at math. I hear it, you know, all the time from high school kids, but it's because I think that they haven't really figured it out as to how it all is relevant to them in life. And it's just a seed to plant with you, let you think about that, because make it more friendly for them, and maybe they will embrace it.
Well, the goal is to take those, the core standards that they're learning from their math and science teachers, and have them apply that knowledge into a piece of artwork, or into... I have a 3D art class, my eighth graders, and right now, we're building, we're studying the anatomy of cats and dogs. And they have the choice of building a cat or a dog, and the study starts with the forms, you know, your cones and cylinders and spheres, and that's the math tie-in. And then the anatomy part of the animal, you know, where they go and how it's made and why it looks the way it does, is the science part. And so, I know you're an architect, correct? And so, a lot of my... I have a lot of boys in this class, because it's one, it's an elective, so they get to choose between a 2D class, which is a drawing, or a painting class, or the sculpture class, which is building and more engineering-type architectural, so...
Well, do you think it's true that, or is it your observation, that kids in middle school tend to shy away from math and science?
Um, if they don't... If they get stuck, I think they do. I think if there's a point in their education where they get stuck with a specific content area, then that's when they... I know, I read a statistic, my first, it was my first or second year of teaching art, that kids decide in the fifth grade whether or not they're athletic, they're artistic, they're smart, they're pretty, and they make that decision on their own. And it's our job to make sure that we keep them thinking that that's not the case. So, trying to... I used to spend a lot of time with my fifth graders, even the ones that weren't as talented as others, just, you know, yes, you are good at this. Yes, you will get better. It's a growth mindset.
Yeah, when kids are able to make sense of what they're doing, like making sense of math by doing it in art class, I commend you for that, because that certainly will help them enormously.
Well, and putting it into real life, and that's essentially what... So, I'm lucky, because I have the subject that can do that. We just, as teachers, have to make sure that that's happening intentionally. And so, I think by piloting this program, it could be something, and I'm gonna check into what Mr. Lemon said about the, what he knows, the middle schools at work. But yeah, I think it could be something really great for the county. Okay.
We can get you off the page.
I'm sorry?
We can get you off the page.
Well, I brought a lot, and I wasn't sure if it was gonna be too much, or... So, if I need to wrap it up, you just let me know. So, moving on from Teacher Academy, thank you. I appreciate that, and I look forward to getting that information and presenting it to TAC. Our November meeting, we kind of took a vote as to whether we wanted to allow an open invitation to our TAC meetings from former Brunswick County School Teacher of the Years. We almost unanimously felt like it was important to have them in the room as a mentor. So, I wanted to let you know that that's something that we have invited the, I think we still have three that are in the county. Ms. Smith is one, Ms. Sokal Scott another, Ms. Sharp, of course, is one.
Karen Walker.
Karen Walker.
We all have them listed.
So, just, I feel like if we have teachers that have the knowledge, we're not spinning our wheels on things that maybe we shouldn't focus on in TAC for the year. So, I'm curious, hoping you're in support of that decision as well.
I think that's a good idea, actually.
So, TAC would like to find ways to boost teacher morale, so it's something we plan to talk about this Thursday, and I will bring back to you in January. I don't know where that starts right now. I know with the low-performing schools, teacher morale is, it's ebbing and flowing, and we all know that when teachers are excited about what they do, the kids are excited about what they're learning. So, I feel like it's something with the personality that I have, and of course, the position that I'm in this year, that we may be able to come up with creative ways that are effective, not costly. And if you guys can think of things, you know, that would work well for us, please feel free to share, feel free to share with me via email, or talk to me in January. Something to think about. Two more, and then we're all done. As the TAC lead facilitator, I've been working on collecting data from the council and their onsite colleagues in order to pinpoint what Brunswick County School teachers would like to specifically advocate for and/or improve in North Carolina or Brunswick County. And so, again, I sent out a survey, about ten choices of things that were kind of at the top of the list of, or teacher concerns. And one that I wanted to make you aware of, and just see where you think we could go with this, was the state mandate of the class size reduction for HB-13. It has left us with more students in the classroom and not enough teachers in our schools. I know my numbers personally at Leland Middle, I have six to eight more students in my class than I did last year in each class, and I have six classes. I'm averaging about thirty-two students per class, and based on the interest of other TAC members, they're kind of feeling it in the schools as well. Now, I know we are a county, this is a county group, and I know that the HB-13 is a state mandate, but I know you guys love teachers, and you show it by giving us a voice up here. And I'm just curious to see, how can you direct us? What can we do? Where can we go? I feel like we could advocate all day long, but how do we use our relationship with you guys, the Board members, and our plight to advocate for this? Our classes are just too big.
Do you think we ought to maybe look at, or ask Representative Iler to...
He's someone I thought about. I know he's our...
Go to a TAC meeting, attend a TAC meeting. He's usually really active in our school. Well, we... To have some dialogue with him, and...
I'd like to suggest one thing that I think would be great to get your feedback on, and it's pretty straightforward. What can we do to increase the enthusiasm with students for learning? And I think there's something there that requires, is required of all of us, but particularly kids that don't seem to be getting it, then without the enthusiasm, they're just going through the paces. I'd like to see every child enjoy school and feel like they want to learn. So, how do we go about inspiring, or creating greater enthusiasm? That may be something that we could help with. Not sure how yet.
Right. Um, that's a very broad question.
Oh, yeah.
You would have expected less, right?
You know, back to that.
Talking January.
And I, back to you again, in January. I know how I do it in my classroom. Again, that's something I think we can talk to TAC about. I think like, one of the reasons I'm, I have this position is, I do have a passion for what I do. I love... I, I love coming to work, even though my class sizes are large, as I've stated. It's a challenge every day and when they come in, it's, I want them there. And I think teachers, for the most part, feel the same way. So it's just a day to day to day and there's, there's a lot of things that probably need to happen or can happen to help benefit that enthusiasm because we are their experts in their eyes for the kids.
We as a board and I think as an administration have looked upon the idea of career technical education as being something that we would like to move towards and to, I guess, emphasize the importance of. But there's an interest gap that we have to deal with.
Career and college ready.
And that, that's part of what I'm getting at, is that interest gap, or interest deficit. Because it doesn't matter if we offer the courses if the kids aren't interested in taking them.
How we present it?
I'm sorry?
How we present it?
How we present it?
It makes a bit, I feel like that makes a difference.
Well, I think it goes back to connecting the dots that Mr. Lemon was talking about, making it relevant as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it is, it's a growing trend in education to recognize the importance of collaborative skills, problem solving, and those kinds of things. And that requires much more engagement by students, which implies interest. So it's something that I think we have to nurture along with our thoughts about what additional course offerings and, you know, directions that we want to see the school system move in. We also have to nurture the students to be prepared and as well as the teachers for new and emerging trends in education.
Getting back to your original question, Mr. Tubbs, have you heard anything recently about HB, HB, House Bill 13 and what the future is and that?
The future of it is that our class sizes in 4th through 12th are going to grow. The flexibility for next year will reduce in, in grades K through 3. And there is a discussion, has been a lot of discussion through the superintendent's organization going back, and it has been forwarded through the Association of Curriculum Folks and through the school administrators, not just superintendents, but principals and assistant principals. And this information has been forwarded to our, our General Assembly with concerns as to where we are. I know today I filled out a, an inventory to, that went back to the Superintendent's Association that will be forwarded to the General Assembly as to what we have had to do here in Brunswick County at this point and what we will probably have to do next year in the way of, and it looks like, I think, in cabinet, we were talking, what, 10 teachers maybe additionally next year, Dr. Meadows? At least 10 additional teachers to meet the, the class size requirements in K 3. It's also talking about, we have talked about, and it was indicated on the survey that I completed, the modulars that we're going to have to, to look at and modulars right now. Dr. Meadows attended a conference just recently where one of our sister LEAs has approached the manufacturer for these modular units. And that manufacturer has none available because he has a contract with the government that the modulars are being shipped to Puerto Rico to support what happened with the hurricane. And so in looking at this and in the cabinet today, I know Ms. Rutledge was, was talking about and has identified the possibility of moving some of our older modulars and refurbishing them because it looks like we're going to have to have the modulars. As you know, we took the, our labs for computer labs and ran, moved the computers out and then put false walls in it so that we could have two additional classes in the K 3 arena to meet it. So it, it's not a very bright future for House Bill 13 and the implications that we have coming to us next year, the additional implications. We are fortunate though, much more fortunate than a lot of the systems that we were able to implement the majority of House Bill 13 already. But it is going to, it'll be in a, probably an additional 10 classroom teachers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could we flag a, a subject to come back to at a later date?
Sure.
And I think it's an important subject because what you're describing is chronically oversized classrooms in the upper grades beginning next year. And I'm just wondering, in the programming phase of some of our current projects, whether or not we're providing adequate space in classrooms?
And this is a conversation, Mr. Chairman, that we would be happy to, to bring to you and your fellow board members with where House Bill 13 sits for next year and, and as we look at the implications, bring those implications to you. Again, we know it's going to be tough at Belleville, it's going to be tough at Town Creek, and what's the third one, Dr. Meadows? Southport.
Well, and just to get back to Ms. Phillips, I can understand why her and other art teachers are experiencing a growth in their class sizes and it probably has nothing to do with the bill.
Well, I think our, the teaching positions that are, hey, let me think about this before I say it. I think that our class sizes are larger, not only because Leland is growing, because Leland is growing. And I know that we have the middle schools in plan and that's coming in a few years, so that will alleviate that. But I guess the fear for your enrichment teachers and feeling it this year too is our classes are growing because the, the K 2 classes are smaller and teachers, like you said, there are going to be 10, you're going to need 10 more teachers next year. So do they come from somewhere else or are they within the county? We're one teacher short at Leland Middle School in the elective department, so we're feeding in. We have class sizes that are probably going to be about 42 in some of our classes and that's not the band. So the concern, it, it's difficult to do what I do with that many kids.
Well, then that, that reinforces my concern about the size of classrooms. Could you use a larger art room?
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Absolutely. I'll take a larger art room.
Of course.
We'll move it out into the courtyard.
There you go.
Yes, it's, it's just something that's on all of the teachers' minds, at least the ones that are really feeling it right now because this being, I think, the pilot year that we're testing out the, the class size mandate. I'm going to save the last one for next month because I know we're, it's 7:10 and I know y'all have business to take care of. Are you sure?
Absolutely.
Okay, one more. So I'm going to propose something that may be a little bit unorthodoxed. So I'm just going to throw it out there and you tell me what, what you think about this. Something, conversations happening in the Teacher Advisory Council are wanting to build more positive working relationships with our Board of Education, with our superintendent's cabinet, which we have at TAC. Mr. Tubbs has been to every TAC meeting and given us the information we need to know and we feel a connection with Mr. Tubbs because we see him once a month in that sense. We would like to spend time with you guys as well. We would like to get to know you. And I'm going to be honest.
I didn't think you wanted us there.
What?
I didn't think you wanted us there.
Well, I was there a few years ago, but then I was asked not to come back. I'm just being honest. But not by teachers.
Well, I guess what I'm proposing.
We used to rotate, we used to rotate some of the board members on there, I think, years ago when it first started.
She's not really necessarily talking about, talking, um,
At the TAC.
meetings, but other informal gatherings.
Just an informal, I would love to sit down with you, Mrs. Cook, and talk to you and get to know you. What I know about you guys and what TAC knows about you and a lot of the teachers is what we see on the website. And that's just how it is. That's the reality of what your job is and we understand that. Is there any way that you would be willing to give us a day to sit down? And as silly as this sounds, I know you're going to laugh, but I'm thinking teacher mind right now is like muffins with Ms. Milligan. Or lemonade with Mr. Lemon. Or coffee with Ms. Cook.
And I'll bring them for you, I'll bake them myself.
I know it sounds, but it, it's definitely one of those things, it's a lighter moment, there doesn't need to be an agenda. I won't ask for mileage, I will facilitate.
We have relationships, that's, that's right on.
It's all about relationships and I think if we can build that, then the trust level goes up. We're more effective, we're more, it's more set up, and I found this that I, I wanted to say because it's, it's a really great way to look at what we do. We want to focus more on the opportunities instead of the problems. And I think if we can get to know you guys as people, that may happen naturally. So will you look at your calendars? Email me, you could give me a date right now, I'll write it down and we will try and make this happen.
I'm taking bets how many times they'll re-invite me.
Well, I was just going to say, we did, we used to have a board member that attended the TAC and so I don't, I mean, you know, but I mean, in the past, so, and that's just one thing, so.
Ms. Milligan and I are retired, so whenever you want.
Yes, so I'll contact you two first.
Okay.
Okay.
You were serious about a day?
Yes.
That's a, for working people, that's a, that's a big request.
Well, it would have to be after school hours, of course, but.
I'm already going to be out with my boss.
We know you're busy. We, 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 we know that, we are busy, you are busy, but I think we can make this happen. If, if it happens one time in the entire school year, wonderful. If it happens more than that, that's even better. So that's all I have.
Good, thank you.
It was fun. Did you have fun?
I did. That was enjoyable. Thank you, I appreciate it.
We don't have any public address, so the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Tubbs, second. Second, Mr. Thompson, all in favor? Next is the approval of minutes from November 7th, regular meeting, November 21st, operations, curriculum, policy, finance, and HR.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the minutes for November.
Motion by Mr. Thompson, second. Ms. Milligan, second. All in favor? Our consent items, only two on there. Do we have a motion for that?
Can make a motion to approve consent items.
Mr. Lemon, that motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
There's no action items. Next thing is the discussion announcement by superintendent. And the first one, you want to do all those?
It's just we have, you know, our December committee meeting coming up on the 12th. And as you know, your next board meeting will be January the 9th. And in tab number five in your book, we have listed the dates for the regular meetings during the year, fiscal year 2018. And as we know, some of those change.
Time for the committee meeting is right?
No, sir. We will, it's usually going to be at the 3 o'clock or 3:30 timeframe like we have had them in the past. I know that this upcoming committee meeting, we do not have any operations. There will not be an operations committee meeting due to the fact that we do not have information for you at this time.
Next thing on the agenda is closed session. Do we have a motion in our closed session as stated on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question here, closed session.
Okay, motion by Ms. Milligan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we take five?
Take five minutes, yeah.